Good evening and welcome to the Edgewood City Council meeting for June 16, 2025. To stand for invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask you to look at the homeless and the sick and get them back into society as quickly as possible. We also ask you to look at our first responders, our police, our fire, our EMTs, as they protect us on a 24/7. Also, those from the standpoint of the armed services that are serving in the armed services for us, especially the local area, watching and protecting us as well. What we do tonight, we do for the entire good of the community and not for any one particular interest or any one particular project. And we do all of this in your name.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome, everyone, as well. Tonight I have Lyndon Niski, our city clerk, taking the minutes. Frank Wickman from Wickman Associates, welcome Frank on the attorney aspect of it. If you have a rule call, please.
Mr. Barlage?
Here.
Mr. Messmer?
Here.
Mr. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mrs. Spears?
Here.
Dr. Spilly?
Mr. Thielen?
Here.
We have a quorum in the city, and welcome the council members as well. We always have on the agenda that for citizens wishing to be heard, that's not on the agenda tonight. This is your opportunity to come up and speak about issues or problems or situations. If none, we'll just proceed. I have the agenda in front of everybody. Does everybody want to add anything to the agenda? Or delete? If not, then I would jump into June the 2nd, 2025. At the minutes, those are council minutes. Need a motion and a second on those, please.
Make a motion to adopt the minutes for our...
I'll second.
Joe, call the rule, please.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barlage?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
abstain.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
The June 2nd meeting stands as presented. Tonight, we're honored to have tonight Judge Nakelman from Kenton County. The judge, welcome. We was glad to have you this evening, and we're very interested in your update. Welcome.
Very good. Very interested, or you'll just put up with it for a few moments.
No.
Well, thanks for allowing me a few moments to acknowledge you and also acknowledge what's going on in the county, and hopefully you can take away a little bit tidbit of information you didn't know. But I had a great relationship for a long time with the mayor, and of course Brian, and just that'll continue and really appreciate the great leadership you all have and what's going on in Edgewood. So some of the updates I'd like to make are not fun topics, but I think it's good to know. They relate to the dispatch operation, police, and in particular, the detention center and that operation. But also just some of the, I'll end on all the good notes of what are going on that were, that are happening in the county in particular, how that affects Edgewood. In particular, I want to start out with dispatch. You all know that some time back, we consolidated dispatch, and that continues to be an ongoing model that is both a level of service that we support, your police department, your fire departments, EMS. But that continues to be something that we're always kind of investing in. Your citizens' tax dollars are obviously investing in. But just a couple of recap parts. One in particular is how many calls does Edgewood generate for our dispatch operation? I won't test you, but it's 13,300 calls per, last year in 2024. For this year, so far, we're about 6,400. Why does that matter? Well, you just know that that team that is handling that call when you dial 911 is something that we all wanted to be depend upon, have a strong team that handles that 24 hours, and they continue to do a great job. Along with that, as we know, we have the regional radio system so that your officers can, and fire team can actually communicate across the city boundaries and talk to dispatch. But also our CAD system, we continue to invest in that and continue to get the newest and greatest to support your teams. And one note of that is that, as you probably are all aware of, is your departments have the updated computers in all of the mobile units. Those are taken care of as part of the regional effort, the countywide effort. That's not on your all's budget. That makes sure that those are upgraded as they're needed. And then what will happen down the road, we have an effort among us right now between Boone and Campbell counties to have a unified CAD system. That's one of the dreams that we have, that I have, and the fiscal court has, to work with Boone and Campbell so that we have one unified software system that supports everybody, both in savings as well as, more importantly, public safety. Great effort there, and the teams continue to do great things. I refer to the detention center. You know, our jailer, Mark Fields, continues to do an outstanding job there. He and his team have really worked hard on making sure we manage the population of the jail, which is paid for by all your taxpayers. It's the number one cost to the county on an annual basis. And as well as making sure that those who need to be incarcerated for public safety are locked up, and the, your police department obviously has the support there, but also so that those who don't need to be locked up are getting the support to get them back out in the public and earning a living and hopefully paying taxes and taking care of their families and being the people they're supposed to be. That population has continued to be right around 600. Prior to COVID, it was knocking on 900 was the average population. Again, that doesn't come easily. That was working with the jail, the judges, the team at the detention center to make sure that that's a daily evaluation. Who's in the building, who's not in the building? State inmates need to go back to the state and be on their dollar as well. So those are all managed by the team at the detention center and continue to do a great job. One area that I also want to point out is that, you know, you all have a top-notch police department, but our county police department is there to support when it's necessary and needed, whether it be crime scene, really accident reconstruction efforts. One of our key ones, which we wish we didn't have to have, which is the department effort that is Internet Crimes Against Children. We continue to need to be there to support, making sure we find those criminals and make sure that they're found in our community. As well as then, on a better note, is that really just being there for backup, right? And making sure that when, whenever we can be there as a support to the high-performing Edgewood Police Department, county police department is there, led by Spike Jones, as well as the support that exists, Steve Hensley and his department, Homeland Security, Emergency Management, floods, different accidents that are at a bigger level that really the city won't just handle by themselves. That department continues to be there and really kind of continue to give a high level of support behind the department here in Edgewood. And just as a note, you know, our team there supports your city in terms of flooding that occurs and makes sure we go after both the state and federal dollars for reimbursement and knowing those hoops to jump through, and Steve kind of facilitates that for you. Brian does a great job, but we want to make sure that we have the resources to pull that all together on an annual basis. Some of the other areas that I would point out, and as I think about Brian, we've always gotten great support from your city administration, but also ideas. And Brian's the first one to pick up the phone and say, hey, Chris, by the way, we could all save money by doing X, Y, and Z. Most of the time, don't tell him I said this, most of the time he's right, but at the same time, we do, I want to admit that there's always an opportunity to improve where our spending our tax dollars. One of those areas is that in public works. You probably are aware of this, but this, Edgewood is one of the cities that participates in our roadway restrapping project that we do as a countywide effort. You know, you don't need to be bidding those out individually all the time. We do that as a county, and it saves taxpayers' dollars to have the best pricing. In addition, you know, overall, we're there to support, whether it be salt, whether it be, you all have your own resources there, but we want to make sure that whenever those things seasonally occur, it's never about pride of ownership. It's about making sure we're providing higher levels of services, reducing costs, and whatever the newest idea that we can work together to accomplish that. That's the mindset that we have with your city as well. In a basic service, animal control, animal services there, we have a new director who is now taking over there on 3L. We've really worked hard over the past number of years, making sure that we're there to respond to the immediate needs of the cities, but also the residents. It's one of the most retail-focused area departments the county has. Why do I say retail? A lot of residents who come in and are utilizing, whether it be adoption, you know, if it's a case where they're just looking for a family pet, that for dogs, cats, et cetera. And that team also responds to the 911 calls and the police needs, law enforcement needs, and it's about 140 calls a year that we get for just animal control services, which would not make sense for a city to do that individually. And we continue to try and raise the bar there, including having onsite vets who can spay, neuter, pet, neuter pets to make sure that we don't, we can control the population of animals out in the community. And there's a whole effort there, which is the newest, we're trying to use the newest models to how to manage that. Ultimately, higher level of service, reduce cost. On a last note, some of the fun stuff. One in particular is we have, I've talked to the mayor a couple of times about this as well, not necessarily directly a benefit to the city, but being aware of the kind of things we're doing. And that is our redevelopment fund. So we were able to have some state dollars that allowed us to have a pool of money that helps cities with challenging properties, primarily commercial, that you just can't quite get off, out of the ownership that is really not managing them well. We all can have pictures of what those might be in our community. How do we get those off, out of those controls so we can put them back into high-performing, less nuisance for our communities? That fund, a number of cities are participating in that, and I know that thankfully, the city of Edgewood doesn't have a lot of that issue, but we are partnering with the state to make sure we have a fund to rectify some of those challenges. That's about a $5 million pool that we have to utilize. And that's on top, by the way, of a $13, $13, $13 million site readiness effort that we are also working on across the county. You know, you have a lot of residents here, you have the hospital, you have a lot of great businesses. One area, though, that the county needs is sites for the kind of manufacturing projects that are coming to our community, desire to come to our community. And we're ongoing, working on that, both in redevelopment sites as well as new sites for the market, when, that we want companies to come to our community, right? Grow their businesses, stay here, employ individuals at a high level. And we have an effort there, which is also in partnership with the state to put these resources into that effort. And two last projects that are, three, I'll point out, one of which is that we're very involved, which is the UK Chase effort to bring to Covington. That project is a $125 million project that the county is working as a lead with the Port Authority of Northern Kentucky to bring that to Kenton County and to Covington in particular. You'll see more and more about that in the coming months in the news. But why are we involved in that? It's really just about facilitating and being a partner with the city, with the port, to make sure that we have the best Chase Law School location in our region, which is the urban core is a great long-term plan, as well as making sure that, as we all need, physicians, nurses, et cetera, they're going to hopefully come to UK, stay in our community. And that's what, again, with a great partnership with the state, as well as St. Elizabeth in our region. And we also, on that side of really figuring out how do we have businesses and grow businesses, Spark House, the effort in Covington on Madison Avenue, so that businesses have a place that they can get the support and funding to grow, have flexible lease terms and rates. And that building, the old Sims Furniture Building, if you remember, down at 7th and Madison, that is now going to be open here a little bit later this summer, which will be home to, not, as I said, not only funders who can fund businesses, but the businesses themselves who are in a stage where they really need to get out of their garage or out of their dining room, but they have employees and they are products and services, and this next level to launch them to success and hopefully, again, grow in Northern Kentucky and in particular, hopefully Kenton County and for the long-term benefit. And then lastly, it's a very fun project that we're, we just approved our budget last week, which included a focus for the redevelopment of the old Fox Run Golf Course. I know the mayor told me it was terrible to shut down that golf course because he did so well there, but we did shut it down, you know, a couple of years ago. That will be the newest 225-acre park. It'll be the largest investment the county's ever made in park space. And I don't need to tell you all the benefit of green space, the benefit of high-quality parks in our community. This is going to be a county park there off of Richardson, and we're in the early stages of that design. It is on the website of some of the early concepts, but it's not going to be a small investment, and it's not going to be something, it'll be a destination park, won't be competing with other parks, that's not the goal, is to add value to the community. Because in general, if you take Edgewood out in particular, we're underparked in Northern Kentucky and especially in Kenton County. And we want to make sure that we have that, which is, we should live up to in terms of the size of our county for the, in the Commonwealth. And one note of that is I often get a question saying, Chris, why are you investing this property, why are you investing so much money? Let's just sell that property and put it back in the checkbook, so to speak. The challenge is that those 225 acres were purchased with grants. If we ever sell it, 100% of those proceeds go back to the federal government. I'm happy to help the feds solve their problems, but we've got our issues in Kenton County. And to me and our fiscal court has said, no, that we're going to put a stake in the ground and have another high-quality park in the community, and we're going to do it right. And so we're going to do it with that, the original, and with that original investment of that green space, and it's going to be something we can all be proud of. With that, Mayor, I apologize for taking so much time, but a lot of exciting things going on in the county, and appreciate the continued partnership and support that you all give us and here to always serve in the best way possible. So I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts, but always, my phone's always available and happy to get any input, what you'd like.
No, Judge, we appreciate your coming and enlightening us from the standpoint of what's going on in the community, and I want to also thank you for the asphalt cart pass at Pioneer Now.
Finally.
Yeah. I really enjoy it, and I think a lot of people on the improvements that you made out there have really enjoyed the facilities as it grows. So we look for the recreation to really blossom as well.
More to come. I think in 10 years, I think in this role, I've actually played golf twice, and one of them is going to be Thursday night, so we'll, finally, my wife's forced me to say, you know, let's go and play golf, so.
No, we appreciate it as well. Let me also introduce John Stanton. John, from the standpoint from Kenton County, John, a resident here in Edgewood, but at the same time, helping out Chris and everybody else down there at the courthouse, but thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. With that, I would like to introduce Megan Bessie from PDS. And Megan's been working on the Z21 for, what is it now, a year?
Two years.
Two years.
We're going on two years, yeah. We're happy to be here, let me tell you.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's really, it's really great to see you in person.
Thanks.
Everything's been so virtual, but go ahead.
I think when we started this, we had to do virtual, right?
Yeah. It's been a long time.
It's been a long, long, long time, really. The cameraman asked us, what did he ask us?
He just wanted to know when her presentation was.
Oh, okay, all right, because he's going to switch the cameras to your, to your presentation.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, my name's Megan Bessie, and I am with PDS staff. I'm here to present the new Z21 ordinance to you. On the agenda is the Z21 process. I'll go through exactly what the process contained. I'll go over the goals of the new ordinance, what is new, the zone changes, other articles, and what is staying, and then lastly, the next steps. Can I get rid of that?
Yeah, is it not showing on here?
It's not showing on mine.
Okay.
Sorry. No, you're fine. It's not there.
Is it an extended screen? Can you move the mouse over to? Hard left, hard right. Hard left, hard right.
It's not working.
Is it showing you on the laptop?
No. Yeah, it's not showing up. Isn't that weird?
It's mic. Oh, so we just.
Yeah, just close all of it and try it again. Maybe it's quick started, maybe it don't work out. It's still there. Anyways, I'll let you know what's on the slides. All right. First, I'd like to thank and recognize everyone that was on the working group. That includes Mayor John Link, the city administrator Brian Deener, Councilman Ben Barlage, Councilman Jeff Schreiber, Commissioner Paul Darple, and city attorney Frank Wickman. Thank you all for all of your time and effort in the night meetings and the two years that we've spent together. So the project began in 2016 after the comprehensive plan and subdivision regulations were adopted. After they were adopted, they were recognized by the city administrators group, which was the final piece of the planning infrastructure that was needed to update the zoning ordinances. The process was divided up into three phases, as you can see on the screen. Phase one started in 2016. It was an audit of the zoning ordinances. And the second phase was the development of the blueprint. The third phase is exactly where we are today, and that is the implementation of the code. So first, we're going to meet with the city, tailor it any way we need to, if you, if you all need to change anything, and then move forward with the city council, we'll need to adopt it at the next public hearing. So the goals, this is the goals of the new ordinance. So it was to create a more user and business-friendly code. It also is to avoid legal pitfalls. We were seeing the same things come to us over and over and over again, and it's basically to modernize the code. Improve overall efficiency, flexibility, simplicity, and predictability. Reduce the number of conformities. Simplify multiple districts, and we'll go through those specifically, and then protect the unique character of the city. So what's new? Each of these, I'll go into more depth, but what's new is the zones. We'll talk about those and how they were consolidated. The use table, those are your permitted and conditional uses. Your development standards, your natural resources and environmental standards, your parking and loading standards. And new is the congestion mitigation corridors and process and procedure. So first up is the zones, and this is to simplify the multiple districts. So you went from 18 zoning districts that you'll see on the left-hand side, and then on the right-hand side is, was reduced to 12 zones. And these zones are consolidated based on similar character of development within each zone. And I'll get into more detail later about the specifics of the zone, like I stated, but the major consolidations occurred within your residential zones, and it went from seven to three, and then your commercial zones went from five to three. Also added was a other district known as the mixed-use district, and I'll get into those specifics as well. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the existing zoning map, and then on the right-hand side, you'll see the updated zoning map. For the most part, they look very similar, and I know on the left, it has a lot more colors, but again, you had many, many residential zoning districts. So they were consolidated, so the residential areas will remain residential, your commercial will remain commercial as well. Institutional areas have increased slightly, and that was to incorporate schools in the mixed-use district, being added along the horse branch. You'll see that in that brownish gold color. And then I will zoom in specifically on the areas of interest as we continue through. So we'll start with the residential large lot subdivision, RLLS. You'll see that it's the light yellow, as noted by the red arrows. This is your low-density, single-family residences. It replaces the existing residential larger lot sizes of R1B, of your current R1B. Anytime that we've made changes from, basically going from one to the other, it was just a straight carryover, so the dimensional standards were revised to match the existing conditions. The minimum lot area is remaining the same of a half acre. For our CVS, this is your conventional subdivision, this is the bulk of your city. You can see that in the, I guess it's darker yellow, lighter yellow, however you want to look at it, the other yellow, as represented by the four red arrows. This replaces your R1C, your R1D, and your current R1DD, and there are four areas. The residential compact subdivision, this is our CPS. This replaces your current R1E and R1F zones, and these are your 6,000 square foot lot sizes, and there's two areas in that orange color. Neighborhood commercial is replacing your neighborhood commercial, so all of the dimensional standards are matching the existing. There are three areas, and this area is to, intended to provide locations for a variety of commercial activities, and that's including convenience stores, retail shops, offices, and personal services. Community commercial is your CC zone. There's one, this replaces your current CC, also your shopping center and your neighborhood shopping center zones. The dimensional standards were revised to match what is existing, and this is intended to provide locations for supermarkets or general merchandisers. HC is highway commercial. Again, it's your existing HC zone. The highway commercial district is intended to promote coordinated quality development along highway corridors. Business park replaces your current professional office, and there are four areas. Again, the dimensional standards match the existing. Flex industrial replaces your industrial park zone, and the flex industrial provides locations for light industrial, and that involves not involving outdoor storage, hazardous materials, chemicals, or anything that generates noise, odor, vibration, or emissions. The mixed-use zone, so this is the new zone. This replaces a current section of R1C along horse branch. The MU district provides a diverse mixture of high-activity uses within walkable and connected districts. Some of the uses, I'm not going to go through them all, but do include, not limited to, a single-family, attached, detached, multifamily. I believe four-family is in there as well. And some of the commercial are personal services, daycares, there's a certain type of daycare, and I have a list of the other uses if you'd like to know those as well.
That was a pretty big change that we made. I just want everybody to know that. We had discussed that previously in council meetings, but never implemented that we were willing to do that, and that's why we made that change.
It went from what to what?
It went from residential to a mixed use, and the reason we felt it was good to do that is it was more separate from the rest of the residential. And that way, it would be, it's not going to be developed unless it was changed to something. I mean, does it need to be developed? No, but at least somebody that owns the property could develop it if they wanted to.
And that is along, like the?
Horse branch.
Underpass, underpass, the horse branch, where it goes under the highway as well?
No, we don't, Edgewood doesn't go down that.
We don't go there. It starts there, it starts right at the intersection, or maybe a little far down, a little bit in there, Conservation District, then right at the Conservation District goes from that area, close to the underpass.
There's a property for sale down there. I think that property is in Fort Mitchell. And then everything this way is Edgewood.
That property's sort of up on the hill, isn't it?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Towards the water towers.
All right. For the Conservation District, this is not currently mapped, but this is intended to protect, protect sensitive lands and unique environmental features from development. Again, this is here in case in the future it gets put in. Institutional, this replaces your current institutional one and two zones, and it's added from, like I said, we did add some from the residential areas just to incorporate schools. And this is intended for uses which are often viewed as community anchors or assets. So just to highlight the institutional areas, we added in the Dixie Heights. There's senior living. Let's see, this is Kaywood, Turkey Foot, and Kenton Academies, and that would be your president's park, right? Okay. Gateway, Hinsdale, St. Pius, and St. Elizabeth are in the big red circle. So the PUD is a planned unit development. This is not currently mapped, but there are standards that are brought for, for the future. The intent of the PU district is to provide flexibility in creating planned communities that may incorporate a range of uses, and those uses include single-family detached and/or attached, commercial, office, and flex industrial, as well as recreational uses. But again, it's not mapped, it's just a placeholder for future. So this is the use regulations and standards. This is where you get your permitted and your conditional uses from the Ps and Cs, if you will. The Ps signify what's permitted, and the Cs signify what is conditionally permitted. The uses that are existing is basically what we used as a starting point for this, and then we condensed things down such as retail sales and service, so you're not having a bunch of uses listed. So just to highlight the institutional areas, we added in the Dixie Heights. There's Senior Living. Let's see, this is Kwood, Turkeyfoot, and Kenton Academies. And that would be your President's Park, right? Okay. Gateway, Hinsdale, St. Pius, and St. Elizabeth are in the big red circle. So the PUD is a planned unit development. This is not currently mapped, but there are standards that are brought for the future. The intent of the PU district is to provide flexibility in creating planned communities that may incorporate a range of uses, and those uses include single-family detached and/or attached, commercial, office, and flex industrial, as well as recreational uses. But again, it's not mapped, it's just a placeholder for future. So this is the use regulations and standards. This is where you get your permitted and your conditional uses from the Ps and Cs, if you will. The Ps signify what's permitted, and the Cs signify what is conditionally permitted. The uses that are existing is basically what we used as a starting point for this, and then we condensed things down such as retail sales and service, so you're not having a bunch of uses listed out. And it allows for more flexibility for uses that aren't listed as well. So we added in some new uses, and this would include short-term rentals, owner occupied, and those are permitted in RLLS, our CBS, and our CPS districts. And also, family childcare homes are conditionally permitted in all residential and mixed-use. And then accessory dwelling units are not permitted. Standards have also been modified or added for these specific uses, so there is a separate section just for that. And that, if you look at this beautiful graphic that you can see so clearly, on the left or on the right-hand side, you'll see the use-specific standards. It's the last column, basically. And those hyperlinks actually take you to the use standards, so it takes you directly there. Not only that, but the definitions are also hyperlinked in there as well, and that's off to the left-hand side. You'll see that some of those are highlighted, and those will take you straight to the definition. So it's much more user-friendly. The dimensional requirements, these photos are just showing you what a zoning administrator would be looking for for the following. So we have made it a bit more flexible for minor dimensional requirements by allowing the zoning administrator to allow minor changes, not to deviate more than 10% of any of the standards for which the modification is given. And this includes your average front yard modifications, or like your setbacks for the average. Determining the buildable area. Setbacks in lot requirements. Yard area delineation, so what's your front yard, side yard, rear yard, and so on. Permitted encroachments. Height measurements of buildings. Also with flag lots, we, oops, sorry. Also with flag lots, the front yard is no longer being taken from the stem, it's actually being taken from where the stem stops, I guess you'd say. It's depending on what the flag lot looks like. But that is to simplify some things coming up as we go through the presentation. Article 7 is your development standards. Basically, we added in lighting standards. The lighting standards previously were they can't glare on other people's property, things like that, very simply stated. In this case, we have now cutoffs. We have full cutoffs, semi, non-cutoffs, and that's to make sure that it's, you know, it's not glaring onto the property, but it's more of a standard in place now. Development standards, they are in the code, however, they have not been opted for, and this includes your commercial and residential. But in the future, if you wanted to opt for them, it could come in as a text amendment. I just wanted to point that out, that it is one thing that we did allow in our new code is for, let's say, transparency requirements, or has to be a certain percentage of brick versus siding and so on. So that's the type of examples here. But again, the city didn't opt for that, but I still wanted to point it out that it is a change, and it is in there. It's just there's no, like, check marks for those.
The reason why we didn't opt for that is because Edgewood is pretty much developed. So there was no reason for us to spend a lot of time on that, and I think that was some of the standards were, I mean, I thought they were just basic standards, really.
Were there not standards along Thomas More Parkway, percentage of brick previously?
On Thomas More Parkway? You mean for like, commercial buildings?
Any of the buildings built along there, like where the bank was and everything?
I don't think so.
I thought there was, because I thought the city didn't follow their own standards when they built the senior building, having a certain amount of brick on it.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I mean, I voted for the brick. But I saw other people did.
I mean, the bulk of that property is almost in me.
It's pretty much built up. If it came in under a plan, it would be per the plan, too.
It would be per the plan.
So it would depend on the area that you're speaking about, but if it came in under a plan, it would be, have to be specific to whatever the plan was.
Did you see adoption of development standards by other cities?
Yes, we did. We saw that in Independence, and I believe Erlinger did the same.
So more cities would...
And more property to develop.
Landscaping regulations are in your development standards. The new provisions make it much easier to follow. They give you multiple buffer yard options. They give you acceptable substitutions, accounting for topography in larger buffers as well, and then preserving existing trees. So there's more options for the developer. For fences, the committee and staff try to keep the fence regulations the same as the existing regulations. The article was redone so it will look completely different, however, it's much easier to follow. So there's graphics, it's modernized, so it includes your, the metal fences that are aluminum and things like that, so it includes those mixed types as well. It also fixed a common problem that is encountered with the flag lots. Like I had mentioned before, we changed the yard delineations. And what we were seeing is, now that we've done that, you can put a fence up in almost the exact same location as your neighboring property now. Article 8, your natural resources and environment. Hillside development standards were included, and that is to retain and require a final approval upon project completion. And it also added additional design standards that were introduced. And then flood protection development standards, the definitions moved to increased readability. Parking and loading standards, so they were updated based on the revised parking demand models, and they kept the same, they were either, they either were kept the same or they reduced in many instances. So parking spaces per use have changed to include mostly square footage requirements. And it was, it basically simplified the laundry list of options some uses had. And generally speaking, we have downsized the amount of parking required for uses as well. We also added in parking flexibility, which allows a developer to conduct a study to determine the number of off-street parking spaces that are required if the use is not listed. There are standards for conducting the study and what data is required for that. Furthermore, a reduction in parking may be granted by complying with any one or a combination of options. And those options can be shared vehicle credits, electric vehicle credits, bike parking, so these are all different credits that can be utilized. Article 10 is your congestion mitigation corridor. So traffic mitigation corridors are new, and it adds additional scrutiny on designated corridors, which allows coordinated access. And this includes Dixie Highway, Dudley Road, Horse Branch Road, Turkeyfoot Road, Thomas More Parkway, and Charter Oak Road. And it's the intent of the city to maximize safety and to minimize disruption of traffic flow, and this is by directing access from abutting properties to existing or planned public streets, and to maximize the city investments in their roadway infrastructure for mobility's sake. Article 11, signs. It's staying the same, but it's just reformatted it again, just to make it more user-friendly. There was a slight change toward a consultant recommendation along Dixie, and that was for the CC or the community commercial zone. Detached principal height was changing from 20 feet to 30 feet, and allowing a certain percentage of changeable copy. And we were seeing a lot of BOAs come through for that. So we modernized the code. Article 13, the concurrent processing of variances and conditional use permits was added, and this is in accordance with KRS 100. At the time of filing an application for a zoning map amendment, they may elect to have the variance heard or conditional use permits heard at the KCPC meeting, and those would become final. So it basically expedites the process. What's staying, so not everything is new. For instance, the sexually-oriented businesses regulations are not changing, they're still prohibited, everything's still the same. It was clearly just copied over into the new ordinance. Signs is another area where there has been a lot of work just to make it meet all the constitutional requirements, but the changes are not proposed for the most part, and it's simply just reformatting. But other things that are staying is your purpose and scope, your universal regulations, administrative roles and responsibilities, and your definitions. So next steps. That does say further refinement under there by the city. You're at the further refinement stage now. So the city council, legal council can take a look over this. If you have any questions, you know, I don't know, Brian, if you want to be the point person for that, or however you want to do that. But field questions, if you need me to, I can do that for you. If there's anything else that you want to take a deeper dive on, that's perfectly acceptable as well. The next step, though, is to authorize KCPC. And what that will do is it'll queue up the KCPC implementation committee. The implementation committee will take a look over it, and then it'll be ready for the full KCPC hearing. And then final adoption through your council again.
Is there a timeline for that? Proposed or not otherwise?
So that's what, that'll be up to how, what you all feel comfortable with. So I think what we should do, our meeting after July 4th is being canceled. At the following council meeting, we'll put it on the agenda. If everyone's comfortable at that time, maybe we can then authorize it. If not, we can then start addressing any issues that come back to me, and we can plan for making either to come back and talk through those. But there's no rush in that, Jamie, we could...
Is there a deadline somewhere?
There is not a deadline hiding. Yeah, there's no deadline at all. But it would be nice, maybe by that September, to make sure that the Air Planning Commission is working on it. Because it will take, you know, when it goes back to the Air Planning Commission, it's another month, two months? Yeah, two months for us to get it. So, but I would think if you worked on that schedule by December, it would be back here, and we would be passing the final ordinances to do it. I don't know about notification to the community or anything.
This is different. So this is, because this is set up like a text amendment, it wouldn't require notification.
Okay. So yeah, I would think if you stayed to that, maybe July, August, worked through any issues, authorized back to the Air Planning Commission by November, December, you would be passing the, by ordinance, I'm assuming, you would be passing ordinances to adopt this as the, to replace the current zoning that we have, or to update the current zoning that we have.
I just have one question. When she brought up the map of the park, why didn't we include this? It didn't look like they included that additional six acres that we added to the park.
We can add it.
It's part of it. Yeah, we should, it could tell on the map.
Go back.
I could see the ball fields, and then I could see they kind of...
Okay, I didn't...
I think that's what the ball fields are, but I don't think it's...
Yeah, there's a lot next to the six acres, just needs to be included for that.
Okay, we can do that. Any changes can be done.
Do we need to include Victory Park in there? I mean, I know it's a little, but...
For keeping it.
Uh-huh.
For keeping it. That's a decision if you would like to, so we'll point out, there's another pocket park that we have.
Sure.
I forget how many acres is in it, Rick. Five to six acres or something that's in there, so we can put that as a spot as well.
Absolutely.
And I can send you where that is located.
And I can take any questions at this time, if we haven't covered them.
I did have one, and I don't know if it's for now or later, but if you could talk a little bit more about the accessory buildings, or is that something we should talk about?
No, she said...
So part of the residential zoning would include accessory dwellings, right? Can you talk a little bit more about that? I saw that they were not allowed in, I think, three cases. But one, there was a work, I can't remember.
Yeah, so there's a, I won't call it a loophole, there's a little kind of glitch in it that if you define your accessory structure as a work, like a woodworking shop, or a art gallery studio or something like that, it can be permitted. And I think what some people do is they take a building that they want to have an accessory building and say, oh, that's my woodworking shop. And it gets approved, and it can be larger than a shed or whatever you want to put in the back of it, it can get approved, so...
So when you're looking back over this, I would definitely look at that to make sure. But the way that we have it now is that if, let's say that were to come through on permits, that would be triggered by building. The building department would know if there's restrooms in there and things like that, and then it would come back and say, this isn't what a working, a workshop is. The definitions are included as well for an accessory dwelling and for an accessory structure. So they are different. But again, if you foresee an issue with this, and the way that things are worded now is the time that we can make the change. But I do believe the way that it is now, hopefully, that's not a loophole.
I'm not sure if we change it, but I'll look, I have it marked down to look up, and then I'll just send the summary out of what is permitted or not permitted.
We did.
We did. We talked a long time about it.
That doesn't mean we picked the right wording.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll look it up and just send out what the definition is, and if it's allowed or not allowed. Because you may, I don't know, you might be wanting to allow it, I don't know. So I'll let you know if it does allow it or doesn't, and then you can have further discussion.
Yeah, I just know that accessory buildings on residential lot are getting pretty popular in places like California and New York.
The one thing that we, I believe, we did not put in, so we don't have, in what you're talking about a little bit, I think some of the communities around here have tried to allow what we would call a tiny home or something that sits on it. And I think we restricted that when we walked through discussion, because we talked about the fact that we did not want in-law house homes, tiny homes or whatever are being built on, so on lots that we have.
If I'm not mistaken, we put in, not for that one, no, hang on. We put in minimum square footage. I'm pretty positive we did that. So our CPS, the minimum then would be, it looks like the minimum building footprint is 600. For our CBS, the minimum, I want to make sure I'm reading the right one, the minimum building footprint is 750 square feet. And then residential large lot is 850 square feet. So we did put in minimums. But again, if you all want to look it over and don't agree, or, you know, have questions about it still, please ask.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
We could put that topic on the agenda next time.
Can't put in about the work sheds or outbuildings or whatever you want, the accessory structures.
We'll look into that. I remember in our conversation centered around if someone built a structure like that that was livable for, say, an in-law, or if that relationship changed, then it would just turn into rental, and they would be renting it as a VRBO or something like that. And we did not want that at all in the committee, to have that, even that ability to start that.
I know that, I recall the discussion around that, and I do believe we put in extra standards for that. And the sizes, we restrict the sizes on the accessory structures as well. I just don't know off the top of my head, without having the blueprint in front of me, what it is, but just make sure they're sufficient.
It's difficult, in fact, because you could have a garage, and you could put a restroom in it, you could put a bathroom inside of it or whatever, and then it can later be converted if you want it. So we probably just need to talk through that and make sure we tighten it up enough that it makes it affordable.
Yes. Sounds good.
All right. What's that?
So we added mixed use, and it looks like, in the example of buildings, it looks like a two- or three-story building that would have mixed use, so a little area, commercial and... But the only area that we have is all green space right now, that we've actually, is mixed use. So is that our intention? Is that what we're saying, is that we want that to be developed into mixed-use buildings?
I'm not sure that that is our intention. We've had a lot of interest from developers wanting to put apartment complexes or stuff into it, and I think that through the committee discussion, they would be interested in mixed use, where it would have to be partially some type of commercial mixed into it with residential as well.
That's all green space right now, isn't it?
You are correct, sir.
Okay.
It's really the other side. The issue you get with that is the creek, right? I mean, getting across that creek and developing on that hill is, is just a huge task. Not to say everybody develops on hills now and cuts into them, but if that is not what you would like for that area, we can change that as we walk through...
I think that's one of the ways that we lead is by how we zone, right? That's the decision that we get, and if we're zoning that as a mixed use, we're kind of pointing people in the direction of building there as opposed to...
Yeah. The only other thing that, and correct me, the only other one that would be really good is like a plan development. So that way, any development has to come to council, and we talk about what it's going to look like, how it's going to be, and we semi-negotiate all of the standards and things that we want to that site. So if you're, if you're really not... So if you're, if you're really not thinking mixed use, the next one you could do for that is to have marketed as some type of planned development. That way, you're open for development, but someone has to pitch that to you. And now you start talking about and negotiating. So that would be a possible for that location as well. Or if you are not interested in having it developed because it's green space, it would, probably would have to stay the way it is because you're taking away a landowner's ability to put even residential on it. So you would want to make sure that you're close to allowing the current landowner the ability to develop it. And right now it's residential, so you wouldn't want to take that away from them and not allow them to develop it. So you want to pick something that you feel comfortable with.
Send you some questions on email.
Okay. Yeah, we can answer that. Yeah, we can go through that and talk about it. And then everyone just think about that area of what it is that, if it's not mixed use, what would be something you would want to have on it? Realizing that it is currently zoned as residential, correct?
Correct, it's R1C.
And so if you go too far away from that, there's probably a landowner issue there. You've changed the zone dramatically.
I'd be angry if I bought something thinking I'd be.
Yeah, that's right.
And just so you all know too, just as a reminder, that the MU zone can be changed however you want it. So if there's something in there that you, you know, maybe if we added this, it can be added or subtracted or however, it's completely customizable.
Yeah, aren't there a bunch of like list of what that mixed use means, what can be put into that mixed use? So maybe if you look through that section and just see if there's things in there you just don't like that one to have and that as well. And single family is fine? You just want to give it away then?
Any other questions?
Oh, Megan, I think it's all up to us now to make the decisions and make the corrections or changes and then we have to get back to you.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I guess the mayor's up to bat here. I want to say thank you very much to Lucas and the rest of the group for the shredding event. It was, it was a steady, steady group, come and go. I don't think we filled the truck up, but at the same time, it was a good success for those that used it and we'll continue with that type of a program for the residents as well. It was well done. The concerts in the park has started last Tuesday. I always use this word, it was standing room only, from the standpoint that it was a crowd. We had over 500, 600 people. We had St. Pius parking almost filled. And the Doghouse attraction was, was really a benefit as well. And we have more concerts coming up here and we'll announce them as well. But the kickoff was, was a super, super evening and it worked out well with everybody. So I'd like to thank the police and everyone else and the public works and our staff from the standpoint of coordinating it and coordinating the concerts for the next few weeks as well on Tuesday evenings, so thank you on that. Couple of things, just from the standpoint everybody's been aware of, from the standpoint of the news media, that the Clay Wade Bailey Bridge is going to be closed Wednesday, the 18th. And it's going to be closed for the last, for the next 13 days. They're doing some equipment repairs and some metal, doing some welding, some other things to the bridge from the standpoint of making it to, will last a little longer from the standpoint of, for us all on travel. I think I mentioned from the standpoint somewhere along the line that the legislative group was going to be meeting and it is going to be meeting June the 18th, if anybody would like to go to that. That's at the Madison Event Center, and that's in Madison. And nine o'clock is going to be the joint meeting with the Economic Development and Tours, Small Business and Information Technology. At 11 o'clock, it's, it's going to be Health Services. And at 1 o'clock, it's going to be Legislative Research Commission. So if anybody would like to go down to the Madison Avenue Event Center from the standpoint of meeting with the legislative folks, this is what they'll be putting on from the standpoint on the 18th of, of June. In our Memorial Day ceremonies we had the other day, we had an individual there, Louis Goodridge, was presenting from the standpoint of different things in regards, I think, some of them talked over there. He had some little tanks from the standpoint of, on his table, if you remember, from the standpoint he had. And then, of course, he's also got, there's a historical train thing that he has. But anyway, I bring it forth from the standpoint, he sent me some literature and he said from the standpoint, if anybody will, would like to proceed a little more with this, he has Cold Steel and Courage, which is the railroad in armor in World War II, and exhibition by Lawrence Goodridge. Thanks to Veterans Day at the VH Post 77757. This is in Lawrenceburg Road in Harrison, Ohio. It's going to have food, music, flyovers, shake the veterans' hands. That's Saturday, July the 5th from 1:00 to 5:00 is what he's going to have. The other thing is from the standpoint that's, as well as Florence, the city of Florence, is going to have the Goodridge Design and the proudly present the Veterans Day display on November the 11th from 2:00 to 5:00 in regards to the World War II operations and the train layout. That was basically the other picture that I was showing here. And then, of course, the Christmas celebrations is going to be December the 5th from 5:00 until 8:00 p.m. That's the holiday model train and that's going to also be at the Florence Government Building at, in Florence, Kentucky. So if anybody's interested in furthering some of the, meeting with some of the veterans, these are some opportunities to do so. And I want to thank him from the standpoint of pursuing that and also the presentation that he was with us at the Memorial Day ceremonies. With that, I don't have much for the mayor's, the meeting was canceled this last weekend, so don't have any really updates on that. The Municipal Government League meeting is again going to be at the ballpark, if anybody would like to go there, August the 1st. Of course, that's our golf outing, so I have to attend or we will be attending our golf outing. But from the standpoint, they are presenting it, that anybody would like to go again and meet with the commissioners and commission and judge executives from the standpoint, they're watching the ballgame and that is August the 1st at the Thomas More Stadium. Let me jump into staff reports, any questions with Brian Deeners? Also on city clerks with Belinda? Also fire, Tom and the rest of, general services with Rick?
I had a question for Rick, but it didn't have to do with his report. I was just curious where we were on updating the street signs. I noticed that you changed some of them, that they're painted, they have the stop signs on them and they have a street sign. I know towards like old Edgewood, a lot of them are really getting faded and rusting and.
So we're, we're taking the city, breaking it down by routes, like our snow route system. We started at the end of the city at the end of Dudley and we've completed the snow route at that end of the city. It includes things like winding trails area and working our way back from Kentucky 17, winding trails going in that direction. That's complete. So we've gone through and replaced all of the U-Channel posts. We have put in the new square post with the street ID signs. We have not gone through that snow route yet and replaced all of the larger four inch square decorative street ID sign posts yet. That's kind of a different animal. Those are a lot more expensive. And we are kind of replacing those, number one, as they start to deteriorate. Perhaps they get run over by a car, knocked over somehow, we're replacing them then. If we're doing a street project and we have an ID sign on the inbound side of the street, a lot of times now we're converting those or removing those to the outbound side of the street, putting in a new ID post, new ID signs and a stop sign with, on the same post as, as the ID sign.
Yeah, they look great.
We're also replacing the street ID signs and we're doing that most of the time. But when you combine the decorative ID post, the new ID signs and the new ID brackets, you're looking at an investment of over $1,000 per sign. So it gets costly and with our, living within our means, within our budget, we need to do our best to stretch that out as far as we can with the, with the decorative ID sign post. But I'm happy to put a program together phased over a couple of years, if council would like, to start going through and replacing all of the older square decorative ID posts. When we're doing that, we're eliminating the steel curlicue that exists under the sign. Those were apparently made in-house when we had welding skills that were a lot more in-depth than we currently have. And I think the curlicues are making it difficult for those ID signs to stand up straight. And I prefer that they stand up straight when we have them. So we're just eliminating that portion and putting in a nice decorative holder for the ID sign.
Are we able to still make our own signs?
When we're putting in new ID signs, most of the time we purchase those from clean. But yes, we still have the capacity to make them.
I just noted, like you'll, you'll drive down the street and you'll see the, like, for instance, the one at Turkeyfoot and Dudley. You see the Dudley one, it looks great. But the Turkeyfoot one, it's almost so faded you can't even read it because of the way the sun hits it. I was just curious where we were on that, because I know you, I know you've been working on it.
We have with, like I said, as I explained, that's, that's kind of how we've been addressing it. But if council prefers, I'm happy to put a program together where we just go section by section as we're converting over from U-Channels also, just also start replacing all the old square ID signs, posts, putting them on the correct side of the street and installing the stop signs as appropriate. Kind of condensing down the amount of sign clutter that we have.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe for next budget. I, I don't know, I say keep pulling what you're doing, I was just curious where we were at.
Okay.
Rick, thank you very much, appreciate it. Police report from Jimmy and recreation from Lucas. Any questions? If not, I'll jump into, as we discussed earlier, the July the 7th, we'd like to cancel that council meeting. Due to the 4th of July, from the standpoint, everybody's going to be recovering from, from, from the, from the, from the, from the 4th. So that's the reason we're, we're doing that cancellation of the meeting. Also, the approval, what we need tonight is approval for an estimate on the aerial truck 160 and the repairs. I think everybody was given a copy of what has to be done to the door and basically.
The only thing we might want, I had a call from a council member, we did not explain why we're doing repairs to it. So for that amount, you might want to know why. So Assistant Chief, you would provide just an update of what happened to the aerial? So they know why they're approving that?
Yes, a couple, maybe two weeks ago, the ladder was about being checked. And the driver got a backer, walked around the truck, thought all the doors, everything was secure while he was backing. And if you're familiar with, when we use a backer, they stay on the driver's side. When he was backing in, he heard a crunch, stopped. Apparently the right front, what we call officer door swung open when he was backing up and hit the building. There was no damage to the building except for a little scratch, but we did get the damage that we need to get fixed. The door won't stay completely shut, it's just barely latched on, so we try not to drive it or take it anywhere just for a safety precaution. So that's why we were trying to get this done and repaired as soon as possible. So he followed all safety precautions, everything was done the correct way. It was just a proverbial accident, so it happened.
Thank you. We have to get into, for insurance, so the only thing is we have the deductible off of it. But because of where we're doing the repairs for, it requires council to approve the use of where we take it. So we just need a motion and a second and then council needs to vote on it.
I'll make a motion to make the repairs to the aerial truck 160.
Jeff, Rob?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There has to be a finding by the council that the contract, first of all, the details has to be identified in the minutes. Details being cost and provider. And there has to be affirmative finding by the city council that the contract is in the best, is in the.
You're not right, best interest of the.
I don't think it's best interest, but it's in the, in the interest of the city.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
Well, all right, to repair the, to repair the door jamb area on the right side of the cab, we propose to remove the door, examine what damages are inside and the front hinge area. We do believe the door hinge will have to be replaced and the right door has some slight warp. So we will have to replace the lettering, the graphics while we're repairing the door jamb area and the front panel. We estimate the repairs and the labor to be $8,985 and the materials to be $2,865 for a grand total of $11,850. This should be noted that given our status with Spartan and our extensive fabricating skills, that we can restore the structural integrity of the cab back to the original status. We have, might have that included in the motion.
We can, we can put that in the, that will be included in the minutes.
Yes.
So again, why did we not get a second?
Uh, we did, I, Chief Dikman did look for a second quote and they told us they were six months out on doing. And at first, I think they even indicated they weren't interested in handling and taking care of it. And then later came back and told us they might be able to fit it in. So Tom just felt uncomfortable with the two different quotes. And then the company that we are asking you to do business with, they indicated that they have an opening here in the next week or so and can get it back to us and in service a lot quicker than.
So in the interest of time, is that, is that what we're saying?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Time and I believe that the quote probably would have been very close. I don't think it would have been substantially different from getting it to another one with the repairs to it. It was, I'll call it minor repairs. I mean, it looks like a lot because of the dollar amount, but when you're talking about a $1.5 million vehicle, it's relatively minor. So I don't think the cost would have been that much different from the quote. But it is timing, we found a vendor that would, could turn it within the next week or two.
Okay, I just, I'm glad it was addressed. I just want to make sure we're doing, yeah, thank you.
Do you have a first and a second? It's caller roll, please.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlich?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Upstane.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Approval has been given for the, for the approval of the, to the, to repair the aerial truck 160 repairs has been approved. We do have an ordinance tonight, the ordinance is 2025-06-04, which is a budget for the fiscal year 2025 and 2026. This is a second reading, Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Edgewood in Kenton County, Kentucky, adopting a budget and personal pay plan brackets for the city of Edgewood for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025. By summary, there's attached to the ordinance, a schedule that is for the budget and the position payments.
With that final reading, I do need a motion of first and a second.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-06-04.
Rob Thielen?
And I'll second.
Ben Barlich? Any just further discussions? If not, caller roll, please.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlich?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
The budget has been approved for the 2025, 2026. I'd like to say thank you very much to the staff from the standpoint of putting this all together, from the standpoint of the realistic and the, and the working budget for the coming year. I'd like to, Brian, our staff inside, Belinda and the rest of them from the standpoint of all the time we've been consumed or you've been consumed, to bring. we've been consumed, or you've been consumed, uh, to bring this to fruition. And from the standpoint of the council, thank you very much from the standpoint reviewing it and presenting, and we presenting it to you from the standpoint of getting the approval so that we can work for the next year. But again, thank you very much for everything that you've all done behind the scenes. And I think, uh, we'll, we appreciate everything you've, you've approved now. Thank you for, on that. We do have some up and coming events. Again, like I said, it was standing room only, I think we'll have standing room only again Tuesday night at the summer concerts at President Parks, and that continues with Marsha Brady tonight, or tomorrow night, and, uh, not Johnny's Band, and that's coming on the 24th. So, the 24th is not Johnny's Band, and, uh, we have, uh, the Brady Band tonight, or tomorrow night, at, at the park. So, hopefully, cross your fingers from the standpoint, we have a good, good weather on, on that as well. Saturday, June the 28th, just join us for the rock painting at noon, and the sun and moon night at, with the CAS, uh, at President's Park at 7:00 p.m. Must be registered for both events, and again, that from the standpoint, that's the astronomy from the standpoint of the, the sun and the moon, uh, night at, uh, starting at President's Park. And then, of course, if you can, join us for the Erlanger Putt-Put on Sunday, the, uh, Ju- July the 20th, from 5:30 until 7:00. And you're entitled to two free games of Putt-Put, and all you need is proof of ident, of identification as a resident of Edgewood. So, July the 21st, or 20th is important with the Putt-Put, but of course, we've got the, the rock painting, and of course, the, the viewing on, uh, June the 28th, and of course, we've got the concerts tomorrow. With that, if there's any other questions or, or comments, otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Ben Barlich?
Second.
Rob Thielen? All in favor?
Aye.
Those not in favor, like signs. Good night.
Thank you.